Tonight from the last time?
Yep.
Yeah.
How'd it go?
Okay.
Yes, Terry is.
Okay.
Most of our best.
She's on.
Yeah.
Is she on?
She's on now.
Okay.
You could log into Zoom.
It's impractical for her to be here.
It's just a flat out lie because vacation is practical, right? I don't have Zoom on this yet, so I won't try to download. That's one thing I haven't done.
Now, if you wanted to be in there, she would like to see what she raised her hand. Otherwise, I'll just tell you.
Okay.
You want to send me the link at least?
Oh, sorry, by any way.
Download as we talk.
Good, how are you?
All right, so I will call this meeting of the Amherst School Board to order in our once-new-again home. It's nice to be back in the learning conference and to be able to continue in person. So it is six o'clock as we get started tonight. We do have four members of our board here in person tonight. Terry Beam is joining us via Zoom. So before we get started, I do want to just make sure that, Terry, you know the drill at this point after eighteen months of it, that you are alone, that you are, it is impractical for you to be here tonight. And there was a third stipulation, that's it, so just those two. So if you can confirm that you are alone and that you, it wasn't impractical to be here tonight, we can get started.
Oh, she can.
Oh, she can. No, she's there, and she couldn't before, she wasn't, didn't look like she was sitting there. So, Terry, can you hear us tonight?
Yep, sorry, I had to go grab something. I am here and I can hear, and I am alone.
And it's impractical for you to be here?
It is impractical, I'm on an island.
Okay, that sounds desperate, so. Yeah, so we will get started here tonight. There is a, just a bit of a change in the way that we'll do things tonight. We're only going to have one public comment, and I'll let people that are here know that the public comment tonight, we are going to limit it to what's on the specific agenda, and that's simply because we've had two nights of all the conversations about reopening. So not that we don't want to hear more reopening comments, but tonight we do have a lot of other business to get through. So we want to make sure that we limit it to just what's on the agenda tonight, and we will have one public comment later on this evening after we get through some of the other business. We do have some guests here tonight, so we want to be respectful of their time and make sure that we're able to talk to them. But as of right now, it does not appear that this will be an issue. So what I will do is we'll start off tonight with our major project after the reopening, and this is the school facilities projects. We've called it a bunch of different names, but essentially the new school project for Clark Wilkins and the renovated Amherst Middle School. We have a big update, and we're able to hopefully take the next big step in this entire process tonight. So to do this, I will invite Shannon Gascoigne, who is the Chair of the Joint Facilities Advisory Committee. I will hand over the floor to her as we get going on a list of items that we'll have to vote on tonight and approve to continue this project.
Great, is this the hot seat? I'm used to the podium.
Just missing the lamp.
That's right, that's right. Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, like you said, I'm here tonight to present an update from the Joint Facilities Advisory Committee as it relates to the projects being looked at in the Amherst School District. But before I begin, I would like to thank the board for your continued involvement and direction that you provide the committee. I think it's important to highlight that most of what I'm sharing this evening will not be new to you, either through participation directly as a committee member, through subcommittee work, or by watching our meetings on your own. You are a pretty well-informed group individually. We have four items for you to discuss collectively tonight as a governing body. They are the recommendation of a site and civil engineering firm, the recommendation of a construction management firm, an enrollment cost and design capacity presentation, and a recommendation regarding a building design direction for Wilkins. So I'll be assisted this evening by Business Administrator Facy, Facilities Director Mr. Preston, and Superintendent Steele, all of whom I welcome to jump in at any point in time as needed. So first, we will begin with the recommendation for the site and civil engineer. An RFP, which as you know is a request for proposal, was posted on the district website and additionally sent out to five vendors. The district received three proposal submissions. The district reviewed internally and with the facilities project team steering committee. We determined only to contract for the pre-bond work at this time. Upon review and discussion, because the difference in cost between proposals was minimal, and to ensure that we remain on schedule, we are recommending that the Amherst School Board direct the superintendent to engage the continued services of tie and bond. As you recall, tie and bond has already done some very preliminary site work for us. So at this time, Mr. Chair, I can pause for the board to discuss before moving on to our next item of business, if that makes sense to you.
It does, so I will open it up to questions for Shannon for the first part with the civil and site engineer.
Sorry, now my mic is on. I just want to open up for confirmation that tie and bond is the company that was used to do the test on the upper field as well as they've looked at the backfield prior, correct?
That's correct.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so we will take, we'll do this in stages for the, for the ease of the approval in case we have any issues later on. Not that I foresee them, so we'll take a vote on this to accept the recommendation of tie and bond as the site and civil engineer as we continue on in this progress. Terry, I will go to you first for your vote.
Beam, yes.
And we will take a roll call vote, everybody that's, that's in person, just so Terry can hear us and we can make it official that way. So we'll start with Victoria.
For EC, yes.
Conklin, yes.
Who's me, yes.
And Gothier, yes. So the tie and bond is now officially hired as our site and civil engineer, and we will go to step two.
Great, thank you. So now we'll move on to the business of the construction management firm recommendations. An RFP went out late July to six construction management firms. Similar to the process that we employed with the architect search, an optional tour was offered to interested firms in advance of the submission deadline. Three firms attended the tour and three firms submitted proposals. The facilities project team, which as a reminder is composed of SAU leadership, board leadership, and JFAK leadership, reviewed each of the proposals and interviewed all three firms via Zoom. After the initial interviews, we invited two firms to return for presentations to the larger joint facilities advisory committee. We felt that this was a really important step as the CM will phase the project, cost the project, and build the project. We wanted the full committee, which includes board members, community members, and SAU representatives, to have the opportunity to review each proposal and engage with the firms. Each firm we interviewed presented strongly and had interesting thoughts and ideas regarding the projects being considered. The Joint Facilities Advisory Committee asked many questions and had an opportunity to discuss at length the presentations before voting on a recommendation. In fact, I think that meeting ran as late as some of your meetings do. Ultimately, we arrived at a unanimous decision for the recommendation that I'm bringing to you tonight for the firm of DEW Construction. The committee was impressed with the detail of the proposal submitted, the detailed phasing ideas, and the meticulous nature of their estimating process as it was presented. The committee was also very impressed with their commitment to pre-bond community engagement and the process they will use to stay on time and on budget with the project. I would like to note that we do have Mr. Wheaton here tonight from DEW Construction. So if it pleases the board, I would like to offer him an opportunity to introduce himself and, and say hello.
Please do.
Do you like to take the hot seat for, for just a moment?
You can pull a chair up alongside Shannon, if you'd like, that way she can't get out of the spotlight entirely.
You figured me out.
So first, thank you very much for the nomination. And DEW Construction schools are what we do. We have two hundred-plus schools under our belt. School after college, I went into architecture for twelve years. Schools, the designing of schools is what I did around the globe. But Pat, my passion is construction. I came to DEW, so this is just a natural fit. Pre-bond is what I know, it's what I've done my whole career. We're really excited about this project, it's complicated. And if we can't, you know, the, the construction side is quote-unquote easy, right? It's, it's not, it's not very difficult, but when you start to phase and work and interact with students and parents, it becomes a lot more complicated. This is again what we like to think of ourselves as specialists in, and we just sort of, our first plan that we presented is not going to be the final plan. This is going to evolve, we understand this, and we look forward to it because when we get input and understand the exact timing of buses coming through, we can modify our plan and make sure it's right. So if you have any questions for me, that's, I'm here, but you know, it would be our honor to assist in this process and help you get through pre-bond, which is your first tall hurdle, so.
Okay, I will open it up to any board members that might have questions. Fire away.
Thank you. So one of the things I heard Ms. Gascoigne mention is community engagement. So what does that look like from your side of things? How do you engage? Where do you engage and at what time?
Well, we're part of the team, right? The collective team. So really, what I like to do is, is identify and understand, every community is unique, we understand this. But you, as a community, have two towns, or three technically where we're sitting here, but there's, there's really two, there's Mount Vernon and Amherst that we need to understand. They're both different. You know, understanding the demographics of each is what I like to do, I like to understand the research a little bit so that we can understand how to present to each community. And you all know the individuals the best that have great questions, are local experts in certain things. So we go and identify and bring those people closer to us to understand what their concerns are out of the gate. They may still vote the way they're going to vote, but maybe their voices are still heard, but maybe they're, they're more tempered, if you will, because we just need to understand what, what their concerns are, and then we can address that. Because if, if they have concerns, there are other people that align with them, have the same concern. So we like to address. I'm the type of person that shows up unlike tonight, but you know, a little early to see people come in, understand their body language. I'm watching as the architect is presenting, and I watch for head nods, and I say, okay, I've looked about fifty percent of this group, right? There, that's a yes. Or if you see a lot of people just like doing the head shake side to side when they're talking about certain topics, you know, I'll write down that note, and then I'll ask the committee and the boards, so why is there so much like, has this been brought up before this, you know, grandiose, whatever it is? And yes, that's why everybody's saying, here we go again, whatever. You know, I like, I need to understand that, so that way when I'm up presenting, I know how to sort of communicate properly and effectively and not, not create more chaos or nervousness for the vote. So, and I'm there the whole time during, early during and after, and if anybody ever wants to talk to me, I'm, I'm there. Or the team, I'll have an estimator with me, our project manager will be there during key presentations, as will our superintendent, who will talk logistics, safety, you know, we each have a role at DEW, and we each do it very well, which is why we come as a team.
And we did have an opportunity to meet the team during the interview process.
Mr. Steele?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So to be clear, for the board's benefit, by hiring, agreeing to hire DEW this evening, there is, there are two, the two most complicated contracts a school district ever enters into is between a school district and an architect, and between a school district and a construction manager for a construction project. I think Mr. Wheaton would agree. So this evening, by, by hiring him, we don't have a finished contract in place, and in reality, we won't have one until we go through, the project is passed, and we work through and get to ultimately a guaranteed maximum price addendum to the contract. So really what you're authorizing tonight is that they will be engaged in the pre-bond work. They're almost certainly going to be our construction manager for the entire project, but there is still a contract negotiation that will have to take place to nail down the final cost, the final details, all of that. And so I think there is a ninety-nine percent chance that we are able to get there with DEW. I've had conversations on your behalf with the owner of the company. We're very comfortable in our ability to negotiate those details when the time comes, but I want you to be clear about how that process works. Is that we're, we're part, we're saying publicly that we're partnering with DEW, they're partnering with us. We're comfortable with them, we're excited to work with them, but there is still a contract negotiation that will take place. And there is that outside chance that we are unable to get there, and we have to circle back. But again, I just say that for the point of clarity, but not because I think it's a likelihood at all.
Additional questions, Victoria?
And so pre-bond, we'll be having some public forums, and is it correct to assume that DEW would be present at those?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I failed to mention, I mean, we said Mr. Wheaton, my name is Matt Wheaton, just for anybody that's typing something. And my, my official title is Vice President of Preconstruction Services.
Thank you. Um, so I kind of have a couple of questions on the process of working with a construction manager and stuff like that, especially since you just said what your title was, it kind of makes me want, wonder even more. So we have pre-bond, and then there's the post-bond work, which will heavily use a construction manager as well.
That's correct.
But that you would hand over at that point, correct, to somebody else within your team?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Like, I mean, obviously I doubt you'll go away.
That's.
Part of it, but.
Well, I do phase out.
Okay.
As I get closer to construction, my strengths diminish, just by nature of how I was trained. But I, I am here at the very beginning and will not let it go until it's in good hands. But that person that's going to take it over, Kristen Wells, is with me already. So she is, is kind of working with me through the whole pre-bond process, because what we don't want to do is have all this knowledge in one person's brain, the bond passes, I say, my job's done, push it off, and then we have somebody start at, well, why did we get here? Why did we pick A and not B? Why is C not D? Like, all that information is still with the project manager. She, so she is from beginning to end. I just start to fade out as we get closer to construction.
Awesome, thank you.
So I have a question that I will ask a little bit later when we, when we review the two designs that have been recommended. So just to get your thoughts on that, if, if you're okay sticking around for that portion of it, just some questions on that. But the estimates, any estimates that you've provided so far in terms of the environment that we're in now with supply chain issues, and then really unknown costs, how confident are you that you've been able to peg what we have? And then how confident are you that the supply chain, if this passes in March, will be sustainable so that we can actually continue this? And then maybe a third part, have you built in in your timelines contingencies for supply chain issues?
Yes.
Three parts, I realize it's three questions.
All three loaded questions. So, so to start with the estimate, yes. So in, in, when we did the estimate, there was a conceptual plan provided to us.
Yep.
Not a ton of definition on, on anything, so we, we sort of put together what I call sort of a book, but it's, it's a narrative, scope of work, that we made some assumptions. And you know, whether the, we had carpet or whatever, that, that doesn't, that doesn't matter, it's kind of a floor finish we had. So we made some, a lot of assumptions, put those assumptions in a book. We made a lot of opinion, we understood that there was going to be some steel. So what we did in our estimate is we sort of captured what we think today's steel is today, which is elevated, and not sort of what, what it's historically. You know, we've all heard the wood sort of crisis that spiked, but right now it's actually fairly reasonable. Now, the retail stores haven't caught up yet, but the sort of wholesale is, is reasonable. So we've captured, and what we understand the project to be today, we've captured some of those market sort of anomalies, the spikes, but we didn't go super aggressive, right? So that we didn't do the, the highest it's ever been historically, sort of, we just, it's elevated costs, and captured that. The estimating contingency, we had, we had assumed the design contingency we had, which I think may or may not be also on your side. I don't, I don't know, but we made a bunch of assumptions as if it was just us doing it. I don't, I don't know your budget yet. So we'll all work through that. So what we do is track the market regularly. I watch construction indices and sort of monitor where people project things to go. I'm a sort of a science sort of a guy, I like to understand the data, because again, when I get up in front of the public and they say, why that number, I want to have an answer for them. I don't want to stand up and say, good question, and I don't know why we picked three percent. I want to have that answer. So again, those direct answers back to the public, without sort of trying to BS your way through a process, those direct answers will provide some comfort to many, if not most, that, that this group has sort of thought, understood, and analyzed the, the direction we're going in, and I feel like they've got this under control. I'm going to back off and not ask so many questions for some. Now, there were three answers or three questions.
So to, to kind of tie it, is the supply chain in terms of the overall, number one, you know, fulfilling the supply chain, do you think you'll have it, and are there contingencies in your timelines to say, you know, we, we can expect maybe a one or two month delay? Has that been built in, or do you not have to worry about that now because it's so far away?
It's, it's really too far away. We're going to, I mean, I would anticipate that all the supply chain bubble issue we have right now is going to sort of even itself out as we move through time. But if it doesn't, we're going to understand that. And the schedule was brought up even at our, at our second interview in person, and it's, 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 we, we had to make an assumption, we understand, we understand on other metrics, how much money we can spend a month, and the complexity of the project, and we think it's twenty-four months. But there's no science behind that, there's no definition behind that. As we move through, before we present a number to the public, once we understand the design, once we understand all the complications, phasing, et cetera, we will have a more scientific schedule in place to sort of prove that. And we may build in, you know, with discussion, not, nothing's hidden here, right? We'll have discussion, this is what we think the construction process may be, X number of months, but we have two extra months in here because we are currently still seeing problems with product, whatever. And we'll talk about that, and you'll understand that that is built into the schedule. And if that never comes around when we get ready to build, it just, the schedule compresses.
Um, so you, you actually answered my first question as part of that, which is awesome. The other question is when, so finding the builders themselves. What is your process for that? Do you have a company that you typically work with? Do you bid out? How does that work?
Yeah, so we will be the CM, it's called CMC, Construction Manager, Manager as Constructor. So we will manage the process, we will bid everything out, multiple bids per trade or per division. We collect those bids, we advertise, first of all, and we collect the bids and review them. So when we advertise, we will sort of handpick a few people and say, hey, knock on their door, say, this is coming, pay attention, we'd love to have you part of this process, but it is an open, public invitation, and we will work with you to handpick certain, not handpick, and award the project, but make sure that they're invited. Any key subcontractors that have been loyal to this district that you want to see have a chance at winning this, this project or a portion of it, we will invite them and get them into our system. But we have twenty-four, twenty-six hundred subcontractors that are within, you know, sixty-mile radius of Amherst. So we can, we'll find everybody we need. And this market's very busy, people are very selective, they need to make sure that it's clean, a clean project. Otherwise, they will find the easiest path forward, and if it's, they're going to pick the project that's easiest.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Gosh, I just have one final one that I can think of now, but in terms of relationship with Vanwell, yeah, from what I've understand, you have a relationship with them, but how much are you actively engaged in the design concepts so that what they're putting together is doable or feasible and makes sense, as opposed to them giving us something? We look at it, you guys look at it at that point, is it collaborative as we go along, so it speeds up that process?
Absolutely, and we work with Vanwell all the time, and a variety of projects, not just school projects, but we do a lot of school projects with them. What I enjoy about Vanwell is they take my input, just as input, I'm not coming in as the designer, that's not my job. But you know, we work at, at Sunapee, we, there was this opportunity where they're trying to figure out how to blend two schools together, and, and the committee asked me my opinion, which concept I like better, and I said, I like this one. And they said, why? And I'm like, well, because when you bring the music and the shared services closer, you're not bringing elementary schools' kids into the upper school area, and then back through, you bring it sort of to the common area, and then the, the two populations don't have as much cross. And then you get the share, you don't have two musics, blah, blah, you know, whatever. And so that, that way, we're sort of, we're discussing money at the same time, but also sort of, sort of philosophy behind design and schools and how they integrate. So I think they work well with DEW, and we work well with them. It's, they're, they have, I'm going to be careful, this is all recorded, right? They have low, they have low egos, right? So, so we work well together, there's nobody going to get hurt if we add. The estimating contingency, um, we had, we had assumed, um, the design contingency we had, which I think may or may not be also on your side, I don't, I don't know. But we made a bunch of assumptions as if it was just us doing it. I don't, I don't know your budget yet. So we'll all work through that. So what we do is track the market regularly. I watch, um, construction indices and sort of monitor where people project things to go. I'm a sort of a science sort of a guy. I like to understand the data because again, when I get up in front of the public and they say, why that number? I want to have an answer for them. I don't want to stand up and say, good question, and I don't know why we picked 3%. I want to have that answer. So again, those direct answers back to the public, without sort of, uh, I'm trying to BS your way through a process. Those direct answers will provide some comfort to many, if not most, that, that this group has sort of thought, understood, and analyzed the, the direction we're going in, and I feel like they've got this under control. I'm going to back off and not ask so many questions. For some. Now, there were three answers or three questions.
So two of them kind of tie it is the supply chain in terms of the overall, uh, number one, you know, fulfilling the supply chain. Do you think you'll have it? And are there contingencies in your timelines to say, you know, we, we can expect maybe a one or two month delay? Has that been built in or do you not have to worry about that now because it's so far away?
It's, it's really too far away.
Okay.
We're gonna, I mean, I would anticipate that all the supply chain bubble issue we have right now is going to sort of even itself out as we move through time. But if it doesn't, we're going to understand that. Um, and the schedule was brought up even at our, at our second interview in person and it's, it's, it's. We, we, we had to make an assumption. We understand, we understand on other metrics, how much money we can spend a month and come, come, the complexity of the project. And we, we think it's 24 months, but there's no science behind it. There's no definition behind that. As we move through, before we present a number to the public, once we understand the design, once we understand all the complications, phasing, et cetera, we will have a more scientific schedule in place to sort of prove that. And we may build in, you know, with discussion, not, nothing's hidden here, right? We'll have discussion, this is what we think the construction process may be, X number of months. But we have two extra months in here because we are currently still seeing problems with product, whatever. And we'll talk about that and you'll understand that that is built into the schedule. And if that never comes around when we get ready to build, it just, the schedule compresses.
Um, so you, you actually answered my first question as part of that, which was awesome. The other question, uh, is when, so you, finding the builders themselves. What is your process for that? Do you have a company that you typically work with? Do you bid out? How does that work?
Yeah, so we will be the C M, it's called CMC, Construction Manager, Manager as Constructor. So we will manage the process. We will bid everything out, multiple bids per trade or per division. Uh, we collect those bids, we advertise, first of all, um, and we collect the bids and review them. So when we advertise, um, we will sort of handpick a few people and say, hey, knock on their door, say, this is coming, pay attention. We'd love to have you part of this process. But it is an open, public invitation and we will work with you to handpick certain, not handpick, um, and award the project, but make sure that they're invited. Any key subcontractors that have been loyal to this district that, that you want to see have a chance, uh, of winning this, this project or a portion of it. We will invite them and get them into our system. But we have 24, 2,600 subcontractors that are within, you know, 60 mile radius of Ambers. So we can, we'll find everybody we need. And this market's very busy. People are very selective. They need to make sure that it's clean, a clean project. Otherwise, they will find the easiest path forward. And if it's, they're going to pick the project that's easiest.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I just have one final one that I can think of now, but in terms of relationship with Vanwell, yeah, from what I've understood, you have a relationship with them. But how much are you actively engaged in the design concepts so that what they're putting together is doable or feasible and makes sense? Uh, as opposed to them giving us something, we look at it, you guys look at it at that point, is it collaborative as we go along? So it speeds up that process?
Absolutely. And we work with Vanwell all the time, um, and a variety of projects, not just school projects, but we do a lot of school projects with them. What I enjoy about Vanwell is they take, uh, my input, um, just as input. I'm not coming in as the designer, that's not my job. But, you know, we work at, at Sunapee, we, there was this opportunity where they're trying to figure out how to blend two schools together. And, and the committee asked me my opinion, which concept I like better? And I said, I like this one. And they said, why? And I'm like, well, because when you bring the music and the shared services closer, you're not bringing elementary schools' kids into the upper school area. And then back through, you bring it sort of to the common area and then the, the two populations don't have as much cross. And then you get the share, you don't have two musics, blah, blah, you know, whatever. And so that, that way, we're sort of, we're discussing money at the same time, but also sort of, sort of philosophy behind design and schools and how they integrate. So I think they work well with DEW and we work well with them. It's their, uh, they have, um, I'm going to be careful, this is all recorded, right? They have low, they, they have low egos, right? So, so we work well together. There's nobody going to get hurt if we ask why. So they're just comfortable to work with.
Yeah, I'd just like to provide some clarity for the board on, uh, the different roles of the different people that work for us. And so as of right now, there are three people that work for us. The architect, the site and civil engineer, and the construction manager. The construction manager's role in this is to build the project, but we have an open book contract with them. Meaning they show us all of their numbers and they get paid a percentage, um, on top of what it, it costs to build a project. And that's their profit that's built into that. Their role is as advisor. So they're advising us along the way, they're advising the architect, they're a partner from the beginning. Most of us who are new to construction, think of it like the, the old way of building a school, which is, was the design, bid, build process, whereby you hire an architect, they do the entire design, the architect sends you that finished design, and then we go out to the market and ask for bids on that design. We might get five or six different bids on that design. Um, and then we build it. This is not that process. This is called the Construction Manager at Risk process, which means they come alongside us during the design process to advise us of better ways to design the project that make more sense for our goals. So an architect might say, um, I want to build this room 20 by 20. And they can say, well, if you think about it, that means you have to have a, another set of structural beams that will add. And if you make the room 18 feet, it might save you $100,000, right? That's an example of, of what their role could be in the process. Very simplified one, but.
That's correct.
As an example. So, um, their role is to advise us and to partner with us, unlike a general contractor who would be there to make sure they can build the project as cheaply as possible and save whatever they can to earn as profit. So their role is to really truly be a partner during that entire, that entire timeframe. There'll be other people that we have relationships with directly later on, but I want to make sure the board's clear about how that process works.
Um, I, I want to make sure I fully am clear and also so the community can fully be clear on what you just said. So they quote us, you know, $50 to build it. Obviously it's not going to be 50, but let's throw, fake, obviously fake numbers out there.
If you did, it would be unanimous vote. See what I can do.
Done. Um, they, you know, they, through this process, they say it's going to, you know, once we get to that high number, it's going to cost $50 to build it. They're able to build it for 25, no matter what, we're going to pay them 50.
No. So, uh, that's a great question that will illustrate the process.
Yes.
So, uh, no point where they provide us with a bid, all right? No point will that happen. During the process, after the, a good portion of the design phase is done, we're going to come to an agreement together about the initial guaranteed maximum price. And that is what, what they believe it's going to cost to build it. And what we agree is probably what it's going to cost to build it. Then we're going to go through the bid process. They are going to bid out for electricians, for plumbers, for structural steel, for landscaping, for, um, under a bunch of different categories. Those are hard bids. Those are literally, the electrical is going to be $2 million from one vendor, 2.1 million dollars from the second, 2.2 from a third. And then together, we have say into this process, we pick which electrician we're going to, to use. They're going to de-scope them to make sure that, that, that one who bid $2 million didn't forget $200,000 worth of stuff. Um, and once we do that, we're going to pick all the vendors. Once we do that, then we're going to know what the guaranteed maximum price of the con, of the, of the building is. And so we then sign that portion of the contract that says, this is the GMP. They build it for that cost. And so literally, we pay what it actually costs to build it. Part of that is they get a percentage of what it costs to build it, and that is their profit as a company. And they charge us for their costs along the way. So if they have a construction trailer that they manage the project from, we pay for that, but they disclose what it costs to do that. And so we, we literally pay directly for that cost. If they have to go through a toll booth, they give us a receipt for that and we pay for that. If they have a project manager on site and a superintendent on site, they tell, show us what it costs per day or per week or whatever, per month. For those people, we pay those costs. So everything is open book between us and the construction manager. And what they provide us is information along the way to help us inform what we think it's going to cost to build the project. But if you, if you listen carefully to what I just said, we're not going to know what it costs to build the project until it is fully designed and bid, and in reality, until it is also built. Because there are things that come up along the way that we say, um, oops, I forgot about. And so to be clear how that process works, if, uh, in the process of designing it, the architect forgets to design, um, the ADA accessible ramp in the front of the building, and we don't find out until we're building it, the architect's on the hook for that. If the construction manager, um, forgets to, uh, give me a good example, Matt. If the, the construction manager makes a mistake, that is a legitimate mistake they could not have foreseen. The reason it's called a Construction Manager at Risk, because then they have to solve that problem on their own. If we forget something and say, you know what? We actually want to air condition the school board room because Adam gets hot. Then that would be part of our problem and our contingency funds in order to pay for. So it's a, it's a relationship where responsibility is meted out to the people who have the duty to do that part of the project. And so they're, they're never providing us with a bid. They will provide us advice on what they think the project will cost to build it at several points along the way. Anything you want to add to that?
No, just the, the transparency is, is the key thing here, where it is totally transparent. You, you will see the numbers come in, you'll never under, you'll never question whether that it was a $2 million bid or not. You'll, I will show you the piece of paper to my, you know, it's, it's totally transparent. And it is estimated along the way. We do advise on cost, but also sort of durability. We have those conversations as well. We will build in, um, uh, cost reduction or cost adding sort of features to projects so that you understand this is where we think we want to be as a baseline for a school. And then you may have some adds or deducts from that baseline. And we'll track those and get, collect that information at, at bid time, quote unquote, bid time. And we can sort of, sort of help manage that project budget through the adds and deducts. And again, the deducts or the adds will have a definite or a description to them. So that, yes, this is a cost savings, but you will have to replace, uh, you know, 50% faster than this other one. You know, we'll, we'll have those conversations so you understand what you're buying, what the community will be buying.
Thank you.
Because I don't want to be the person that's, that presents some information and then you guys have to then sort of face the fire when, why'd we put that roof on when you have to replace it in three years? You know, that's, uh, I will not be here, you will, but I'm not going to be the person that leaves you there standing, uh, facing that, uh, that, those questions.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions from the board? I realize we never took a motion in that first vote, so I want to go, do we need to go back and redo it? We've already voted on, we never actually had an official motion for the site and civil.
It would, it would be better to have the actual motion.
So let's, uh, let's do the two of them separately, but we'll do them, uh, to start off with. So can I get a motion to accept Ty and Vaughn as our site and civil engineer?
Oh, my goodness.
Motion made by Beth.
I'll second.
By Victoria. Now Terry, we'll start with a roll call vote with you.
Beam yes.
Free CS.
Conklin, yes.
Kuzma, yes.
Gothy, yes. So that one still passes 5-0, shockingly. Uh, so our second one, for, I need a motion to accept DEW as our construction manager.
I'll make the motion.
First by Beth, second, second by Josh. And so if there's no other questions, we'll go to the vote on that. Terry, you can start us off.
Um, an enthusiastic yes, beam yes.
Free CS.
Conklin, yes.
Kuzma, yes.
And Gothy, yes. So the construction manager, uh, thank you, Matt. We will now call DEW our official construction manager. Uh, and then Shannon, I will let you, um, talk about the last part of this, the design concepts. Matt, if you don't mind, I just had one quick question for you on that, once she presents it.
Can we just stay put here?
Whatever is best for you, but I just don't want you to just.
Yeah, so I, no problem. I was gonna, um, we were going to do the, um, Adam and Amy's presentation next, before we have that design discussion, because I think that makes more sense. Does, does that still work for you guys? Yeah. So, um, Business Administrator Facey and Superintendent Steel are going to share a presentation, which includes information that, uh, the Joyce Facilities Advisory Committee has seen at some level regarding enrollment projections, trends, construction costs, and design capacity. So I'm going to turn it over to Business Administrator Facey and Superintendent Steel.
Thank you, Shannon. So, uh, one question that's on everybody's minds is, what's it going to cost? Am I right? That's, that's the thing that we all have as a, as a, our, our main question at this point. And so this board has responsibility to pick the number that will go on the ballot. Our construction manager doesn't pick that, that number, our, our architect does not pick that number, and the JFAC committee can make a recommendation. But ultimately, as a board, you have to make a determination about how much money you're going to ask for from the community for this project. So to be clear, the way that works under RSA 33 is the board asks for a maximum amount that is able to be borrowed by bonds or notes. So, uh, that authorization, if it passes, never expires and the board, it does not compel the board to actually borrow that money. So as an example, if there's a warrant article for $50 million for bonds or notes and it passes, if the project ends up being only $40 million total, the board would only sell $40 million worth of bonds and that other $10 million would never get borrowed and doesn't have to be borrowed. That literally is the maximum amount that would ever be borrowed. It is important that that number is high enough because we don't want to be in a position of going back to our voters to say, oops, we should have asked for more money the first time around, right? So there's going to be a balance between asking for enough money and not asking for too much while making sure that we don't ask for too little. So in this process, we have, um, as I mentioned, uh, a few minutes ago, we're not going to know what the project costs until we actually build it, which is difficult when we need to ask voters for money ahead of time so that we can build it. So instead, what we have to work on is estimates and a, and a set of costs that we put together and say, this is the right number for us. At this point in the process, our accuracy is very wide. The project's going to cost somewhere between two numbers. And those two numbers are, are very far apart, perhaps, uh, as far as eight, eight numerals apart, more than $10 million apart. Because we don't know how much, there's a lot of unanswered questions. We don't know how the sepik's going to work. We don't know how much structural steel will cost. We don't know how long, uh, we're going to need a construction trailer and a superintendent on site. So the, the, the first thing that we're going to do after this meeting is attempt to narrow that window of costs a bit. And the way we do that is we now have an architect of record and a construction manager. And the construction manager is going to work with our architect and us to try to get a more accurate estimate of cost for us. We ask all of the construction manager candidates to do their best through the interview process, and they did, but that's a blind draw. That is them saying, well, I, maybe they want a carpet, maybe they want to tile the hallway. Maybe they want, um, really cheap HVAC systems that are very energy inefficient. Or maybe they want the top of the line, most energy efficient stuff that costs more in the project. They didn't, they didn't know the answers to any of those questions. And so, uh, one thing I'll quote from DEW's presentation is they said that this next estimate is the most important because it's going to be the one that we're going to have to rely on to put a number on the ballot. So, um, our suggestion to the JFAC committee last night was that we work with the architect and the construction manager between now, uh, and the, the September 30th JFAC committee meeting to develop that estimate of cost for both projects, the elementary and the middle school. The JFAC can review that and then make a recommendation to this board on October 4th for a number that will be the number that will go on the ballot. And so that's what we, we're thinking in terms of schedule and process. To be clear, what goes into that number? We have the hard construction cost itself, the cost that we're going to pay to the construction company, DEW, to build the project. But there's also many other costs associated with the project. Cost of the architect, cost of the site and civil engineer, cost of a third-party code review, on and on and on and on and on. And so we have developed a preliminary estimate of cost for both projects, um, but that hasn't been reviewed yet. We haven't gotten the architect's opinion, we haven't gotten the construction manager's opinion. We haven't turned over every rock to make sure we thought of things. And so we don't have numbers that we're ready to share publicly tonight, uh, except to say, uh, I think it's fair to say, Shannon, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're not in the $96 million range with both projects, okay? We're significantly below, tens of millions of dollars below that, uh, that first estimate that we had, uh, six or nine months ago. All right? So even in the most conservative of assumptions thus far, we are still well below that number. I think it's important to at least say that at this point. And so really in terms of cost estimates, we wanted to ask the board, does that process work? Is it appropriate from your perspective to ask DEW, can they work with us over this next month on that timeline? To work on that estimate and then shoot, target the October 4th meeting as when we attempt to come, uh, and land a plane of a number? Does that process make sense? Yes.
Who wants to take an official vote or?
No, just.
I would just like to mention that, um, with that shift in dates, I think it would make sense for our public forums to start in October rather than to start in September. So for anybody, um, who's watching, that might make more sense if it had been on anybody's radar. I know that we still have time, um, to submit our, our letter to the citizen. So we'll make sure that updated dates would make it into that, but I, I do want to have those numbers for the public forum to start.
But that would make the first public forum, I believe, October 12.
Right, that would make.
You have one scheduled, so we would cancel that September 23rd.
Yep. The fan is running above me, so I can't really tell if Shannon's mic is on, but if it's not, let me know.
Uh, Terry, you have a question, you can go ahead.
Yeah, so my question is, considering that we're, we're just choosing tonight and school is starting, it's a busy time, is that enough time to get a really firm number by October? The one thing I'd hate to do is make a promise and then go, we're close.
So I, I would ask Matt, uh, if, um, in all fairness, I mean, this is the time to say, no, it's not enough time. And, uh, we can, we can respect that. We didn't have the benefit of DEW at the JPAK meeting yesterday. So to be, uh, clear and in fairness to our new partner that, uh, we just hired and we don't want to walk back out of the door.
We just wrote that date down. How much further along is the design process from what we have seen today?
It, it really isn't. It really isn't further at all. Um, and I don't think it's going to be much further along pre-bond.
We are recommending an option out of the two real good options tonight, but.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're not.
And I will add that there will be a preliminary to the, to the, basically to the same level of detail as site and civil preliminary design that doesn't yet exist either.
Yeah.
That, that is not with us yet.
I think he's about ready to get up and walk out.
So next, yeah. Um, we can, and that, that's the number you're going to start to, not necessarily right. That, that's going to be the first number the voters will see, correct?
It will be the second number. The first number voters saw was 96 million dollars.
Oh, correct. Yeah, so, so, but this will be the first time with this new vision.
Yes.
This will be the first number and it's, and it's not, I don't want to put the words in your mouth. This is not the number that you're saying this will be the bond, oh, value? This is, we think this is in this range? Or are you saying this is going to be $2.17?
Yeah, so in, in my opinion, uh, the board needs to be ready in October to say, this is the high watermark, that this is the highest that will go on the ballot. It will be no higher than this number. It could be lower. If something happens in November, nothing stops the board from lopping $5 million off that number. But I think that in fairness to the public and to the board, there needs to be a high watermark set.
Okay.
Shannon, and do you agree with?
I do, yeah.
All right. And then, so then in, in January, when you're getting ready to actually write the article, um, you could lob additional. As we understand more, because when we estimate something that's, that what I call sort of a bubble diagram or a cartoon or conceptual plan, there's a lot of what these two lines, what do they mean? Like, so we have to get definition from the design team, what those two lines mean. So there's actually 16 different materials in those two lines, you know, which two lines don't say that. So we have to understand what that is. So the initial estimate is going to have a contingency of some value that we'll have to all talk about. But, uh, so I think if, if, uh, we're going to go off of what we already have and there's no, not significant amount of information coming to us, we have our work cut out for us, um, to define this, but we are, uh, we are here to sort of work with you. I'm not getting up yet.
That was, I know, I moved.
All right, uh, moving along, Ms. Facey, um, in her first months as business administrator, uncovered, um, a mismatch between our design capacity and our projected enrollments. And as a result, um, she's going to be recommending a, a, a change in scope to the project. So Ms. Facey.
Thank you. So, yes.
Thank you. So yes, one of the most important considerations in, in the design of the elementary school project is student enrollment projections and how that relates to building size. So at the last meeting, J F A C took a relook at the current design and was presented with an analysis of the district's current enrollment projections of students per grade and the maximum class size that the board had, has previously approved. So J F A C discussed three potential scenarios for the total number of classrooms that should be available for student learning in the building. The first scenario was the current building design, which most agreed was too large and had too many classrooms. The second scenario was a reduced number of classrooms, one per grade reduction to better align with enrollment projections, but it also met the maximum class size that had been determined by the board. This scenario also provides a limited number of additional classroom spaces to provide room for bubble years and our, or other learning space needs. And then a third scenario, that's actually the same number of reduced classrooms, one per grade, but no additional spaces for those bubble years or additional learning needs. So after discussion, J F A C felt that scenario two was the option that best aligned with the enrollment projections, while also allowing for flexibility for years where additional space is needed. In addition, happily, by reducing the number of classrooms from the original design, we are projecting to realize approximately four to four and a half million dollars in savings. So I wasn't sure if there are any questions on that. But that was the recommendation of J F A C and Shannon.
Yeah, we didn't form, and so I do want to know, we didn't take a formal sort of around the table vote on it, but we did kind of go around the table and discuss our thoughts and it was agreed that that option was the best. We all agreed in the room that the original design capacity, it was too large. Looking at historic enrollment, looking at, you know, the next five years projected. But we're also very careful, you know, we know that within two years of Wilkins being constructed, they were adding on classrooms. So it's, it's sort of striking that balance between not underbuilding and, and not also taking to the community something that is so large that, you know, it's, it's not sensible.
And are we confident that we, we've struck that balance then, knowing that there are still housing projects that are, have been in development for years? And the plans have been in development for years, so they're not really any closer to being fabricated, but knowing that in the five years, because I know we want to think five years ahead, but really, I think a lot of voters want us to be planning thirty years ahead as best we can for a project this size.
Absolutely. Yeah, no, absolutely. And we, we talked a lot about that and we, you know, we've rappled with that, which is why I think looking back historically at when we were at our peak and then taking into account kind of what is, you know, what we could potentially see in growth, I do believe the projections that Ms. Facey's working with has that in them, but I'll defer to her to.
Yeah, and I guess I would add that we, we did reduce the classroom size capacity from the original design to align with the enrollment projections, but we did not reduce the core capacity in case we end up with, you know, hundreds of, and hundreds of students coming to town. We still have our core capacity of our, our library, our lunchroom, or our other spaces that are remaining at that original design capacity, which is, which is larger.
And one of the questions that we've asked along the way as well with the design is, you know, we want room. If, if we ever need future expansion, is there room within design? So that's key there as well. And in the scenario that we're discussing right now, it's really important to remember that even though we've made a reduction of one classroom per grade, there are still three, we're calling them project-based learning rooms, but essentially flexible spaces that during bubble years can be utilized as classroom space or, you know, during other times, project-based learning classrooms.
And currently, those project-based learning spaces are housed in between the grades so that they're available to, to tack on, should we need them.
So with the new proposal, exactly how many classrooms per grade, not including the block classes?
Seven, as opposed to eight, as they were before.
So I, I am, I know we have the flex spaces, but if we look at our current situation now, we have seven classes in some grades now, correct? Am I doing my math or remembering incorrectly?
Correct.
So to me, that doesn't allow us any room for growth. And if we do have something where it evens out and all of a sudden we're at seven classrooms in each grade and somebody gets a little bigger, then I'm concerned about the number of flex space because Shannon mentioned a word and it's not, the verbage you used, but expansion capacity down the line, I don't think when we're asking for eighty, eighty-five, ninety million dollars at future expansion is something that people want to hear right away. I certainly don't as a taxpayer. So my concern is, are we being a little too conservative in that? I understand we don't need nine at every grade level, but I'm wondering if, if it's five flex rooms or if it's, you know, if you can accommodate more than half of your grades needing an extra room, do we have that capacity? And right now we can do half, but we can't do a fourth large grade because that's really the gist of what we're doing. We want updated HVAC and all that other stuff, but the problem we have now is space. So I don't want to undershoot our biggest need and our biggest desire to do this.
Yeah, so in FY twenty-one, we had, we used thirty-eight classrooms. So if we.
Between the two schools.
Yeah, and this is just K through five.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, so it was thirty-eight classrooms if we were to go with this scenario two, we would have forty-five classrooms that would be available.
Okay.
And the current design. Yeah, yep, that's the middle ground. And the, the current design, there's fifty-one.
Okay, so that makes sense.
So with, okay, and then, so we had, let's use a thirty-eight last year.
Yep.
And then this year, we've already added, I mean, granted, one's at sixth grade. So we've added one technically this year, I guess you could say, over at the middle school for fifth grade, for a seventh teacher. But I don't think we've added any at Clark Wilkins. So we're at thirty-nine for this, right? Because we can't. So we're at thirty-nine this year and this would bring us to forty-five. Okay, thank you.
Is there any way, maybe that you could share those numbers with us too, so we can have a look at them just to review them?
Yep.
Because we're not, I assume we're not committing to anything tonight. We can adjust this down the road if we need to. We can't go to sixty classrooms, but if we had to go to.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think this is giving, giving, you know, Banwell and DEW, you know, we, we need to start shoring things up.
Sure.
But if, you know, in October and enrollment projections, if there's some big shift that we're like, oh my goodness, I would assume that Mrs. Facey would bring that to you all and we would adjust. But it was, it was obvious that, that first design was just very large.
Correct. I think there's, you know, hitting that sweet spot in our, our targeted classrooms. You know, we don't need to be at fourteen, but we also don't need to be, you know, right at the top of twenty as we move into a new building, so.
So my only ask would be, as we move forward with this process, you know, especially over the next month, and Banwell starts to kind of redesign with this fewer number of classrooms, it is an odd number of classrooms. So logic says maybe an even number makes sense so that you're not, you know, weird lines and things like that cost more than straight lines. So I just ask if it economically makes sense to straighten out rather than to make an L shape and add that extra classroom to make it even, you know, go ahead and do that. But at the same time, that, you know, that extra classroom space might actually be, oh no, it's because we have, you know, a specialist in that spot. So it actually makes sense, but when you look, you know, like, so just make sure as you're going through planning that with it, we are also making, making the most economical sense. That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, that's certainly the goal. And I, the, the new plans that are drafted that you have before you that you were sent to, to review do have the seven-classroom model in them. And so you can see what that looks like in the layout, just to get an idea of kind of how the building would look.
Tom, I have a question.
Yes.
Is Clark Wilkins our largest grade level? Is third grade? Are there seven teachers in that grade level this year? Thank you.
Any further questions on the enrollment? We don't need to, we're not voting on that or anything, so we don't need a redo a motion. So Shannon, I will let you go on the last part of our facilities update in terms of the actual design option.
Sure. Yeah, so the Joint Facilities Advisory Committee, after spending time with the draft designs, which are calling option A and option, option C, we discussed and voted unanimously at our meeting last night to recommend to the Amherst School Board that you direct the superintendent and the SAU to move forward with the design option C. This design was favored for a number of reasons, including the simplicity of the building, the sightlines from the road and the reuse of the existing multipurpose room. Additionally, very preliminary estimates indicated that the site work involved in option C was more economical and less disruptive. And the committee, and I think this is really important, the committee strongly felt that Plan A or that Plan C would be more palatable to the community over Plan A. And as a reminder, Plan A is, is the draft concept that has a portion of the building on the upper field and it kind of builds into the, the hill there on the lower field and makes use of that, that space. So it's sort of, it's, it's three stories, but you know, you kind of only see two. Whereas Plan C, the one that, the option C, the one that we're recommending is basically, you know, where Wilkins is currently sitting, utilizing that makes a state multipurpose room. And it's two stories, not three, which was something that we saw last year, was a three-story building, and this is not.
And it changes the footprint of what's currently there now, but it doesn't take up a tremendously different amount of space that's already paved. It goes into that backfield a little bit, but the rest of it is already on pavement, hard ground. It's there, obviously, work will be done on it. But it doesn't, you know, build into a hill and on top of a, take away a field and result in all of those, all of those issues. So I will take a motion to accept the nomination from J F A C for site, site plan option C. And to go forward, that is our design plan for this project.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion from Victoria.
I'll second.
Second by Beth. So we'll open it up for discussion. Any questions on, on these two designs? Or the difference between the two? Any questions that we need to clarify? Josh?
Yeah, just on this specific design, what do we see as the continued hurdles that we need to get over? Have we talked about the wetlands issue? Have we talked about the loop around? Or are those conversations still ongoing?
Yeah, so those are, that's a great question, and those are conversations that we have begun. But I would say we, we are just beginning those conversations. Ms. Parisi and a committee member, John Bockett, recently attended a little planning board meeting. Just to kind of let them know, you know, this is very early, very conceptual, where we're, you know, what we're looking at. They had some thoughts and ideas. Mrs. Facey is working with the community director on, on some meetings to, to make certain that we're addressing all of the appropriate things. We are planning to talk with the Heritage Commission just as a courtesy so that we can make certain that we're informing all of our neighbors and, and the various commissions on, on what's happening. But yeah, I mean, there are still some, some things like that to be, be taken under advisement.
If I can just follow up as the, as the J F A C vice chair on this one. The, us hiring the site and civil will also lead us to understand the, the actual site better and be able to figure out, you mentioned the loop road and things like that. It will help us to move along in, in that area.
Yeah, good.
So the question I had, Matt, just in terms of your experience, what you've seen on this, you've seen both of these proposed plans, obviously in a very rough design stage, but did you have a thought one way or the other, a recommendation or any red flags that you saw raised? Not that we're holding it to you, but just to get your thoughts on the two of them.
I haven't seen the one that's been revised and sent through, but I'm assuming.
Exactly.
Just minus those classrooms.
I've al, I always wanted to see, I'd like to see better from, again, I know I'm not the architect, but you know, as far as its presence on the street, having that set so far back would, would have felt very uncomfortable, I think, to the community to have, I mean, you'd have a, I don't know, two football fields in front of it before you finally got to the front door at school. It's not, it's not very inviting, it's not very comfortable. So I've always sort of liked the option C. The trick with option C is figure out how to phase it so that you're not on top of students while they're learning and we're constructing. So how much was reduced and where was it reduced? So that's my number one question. Was it reduced in the back?
Yes.
Okay, so that does not help me. We have to build swing space, but we have to build enough in order, in order to sort of occupy the front and then push the kids in the back. So there's some logistics that we've got to figure out here. So, so maybe there's a balance between what was cut. I, I look forward to having that conversation, but staying away from that bank, the upper field. And we were walking through the, both walkthroughs, you know, we're talking with Roger a little bit about the, I forget what it was called, Roger, but there's some restrictions or there's a, that's it, on the upper field. And not knowing what we would have been allowed to do, or I still think it's a valid conversation to have. Not because we're going to build up there, but when we get into this, it's still good research for the committee or whoever to sort of dig into the civil engineer, to figure out what our limitations are in that upper field. Can we store something up there temporarily, or is it just stay off? So that, that'll be helpful. But, but C, I, C was my personal sort of favorite. I liked the idea of A, just like that wall, containing wall, you know, pushing into that bank while being a great use of space. It could have had visually an interesting play, but then you get into the, what I was always fearful and I brought it up in our, in our interview was sort of how the public is going to perceive new circulation on Jones, at Jones Street. Having now sort of introduced new public sort of circulation up there and, and as much as we can sort of not bring up new issues to, to a bond vote that some people are going to find maybe uncomfortable, stay down low on the lower, lower property, this is going to be sort of a better battle to have.
I appreciate you, your honesty on that. I know I put you on the spot for it, but I think it was valid, especially when you mentioned the design experience that you had. So if there are no further questions, we'll call a vote. Terry? Sorry, there are.
Not, not just, actually a question, just something that I've heard from the rec department, and I know something we struggle with in town, is indoor gym space. So the fact that this provides both the NPR and then a new gym, I think, is ideal. I also would recommend potentially working a little bit with the rec department because I know that they are struggling to find the right indoor gym space. So potentially, if our new gym is built in such a way to accommodate some of their needs, that it might also help the town be enthusiastic about the building if it lets us play basketball at night in a gym that is sufficient.
Absolutely. I was at a rec commission meeting last night and basketball flooring was something on that we discussed. And I was like, oh, okay, that's a thing I was not aware of and, and a, and a gap that we have. So certainly as we dig into, you know, now that we have, or once you all vote tonight and we have a, a direction that we can, you know, begin to move forward with, hammering out some of those specifics, that's definitely one. Yeah, good point.
Is the, the pre-K and still all in your calculations or separate from your calculations that were presented tonight? Their pre-K is still in the building?
Pre-K is still in the building. It was just excluded because it wasn't in our district enrollment projection, so I didn't want to confuse the numbers.
Okay, perfect. I didn't want to make sure, I might want to make sure we didn't lose sight of.
Yep. Yeah, there's four, four classrooms for pre-k.
Yep, one other thing that I'd just like to mention, I really like that option C keeps our multipurpose room and it keeps some of the space that's, that's right around there and that's behind there. And it also, I think if you think of the building when you're on Boston Post Road, we already know what the size of that is. And then to know that a gym, which would also be a tall ceiling and class, two stories of classrooms will be around that height and scaled toward the back of the lot, I think is a positive of that design.
Now, if there are no further questions, I will, I will call the vote. Terry?
Did we already motion?
Oh, yeah, we actually did that first this time. We, we got it right.
Just wanted to make sure. Beam, yes.
Parisi, yes.
Conklin, yes.
Who's my yes?
Goff, your yes. So that will pass five to nothing. And we now have an official plan to go forward with on this project. So we'll, no pressure now, Matt, for you guys to, on this part, but at least you have a little bit more, more focus tonight. So I wanted to point that before we're.
Yeah, thank you. I'd just like to take a moment and recognize our J F A C committee. So this is August, a solid number of months prior to a March vote. I've never been around a facilities project that was this far along in the planning and the thorough development work.
and the thorough development work. Often, it's January that people are still trying to pull together. How many classrooms? What does the architect think? So this board and the JFAC committee is, should really be proud of that work because this project is not likely to produce surprises down the road that derail the project. And that's really what happens. When you don't do a thorough planning process well in advance, it leads to things we didn't think about where we go, oh, my gosh, now we can't build the project or we need to ask voters for more money or do all sorts of things that don't make anybody look like they know what they're doing. And so I just want to take a minute and recognize the JFAC committee, but specifically Shannon Gascoigne.
I appreciate it, Adam, but we have a really great team. And everyone on the committee, many have been involved since late 2017. I was just going through emails the other day and came across something. And everybody really is committed and cares and wants to get it right for our community and bring something, a different sort of area of expertise to the table. So thank you to the team. And thank you all.
So Matt, I appreciate, we all appreciate your time. And Shannon, again, I echo Adam's sentiments that your leadership has been invaluable on this committee and having a lot of these meetings. You know, it's all volunteer, the work that you do. So we are certainly appreciative of that. But we'll let you guys go home now.
Sounds good. Thank you, and thank you so much, Matt, for your time.
Thank you.
Goodnight, everyone.
So much for coming.
Yep.
That was a great to have you.
So we'll still talk buildings now. Roger and Adam, some, I said not better news, that was good news that we had tonight. But you have some good news after some bad news earlier on in the summer. So I think, Adam, I'll let you take the floor for an update on our Wilkins School and the fire.
Thank you. So the bottom line is that our school is ready to open next week. And that's in large measure due to the efforts by some people who are here and not here. So first, Roger Preston, as facilities director, has worked tirelessly with all of our folks to make sure that that building is ready to go. But Kathleen Murphy and Anna Perrell have spent an unbelievable amount of time, effort, energy, and heart from themselves to make sure that not only is the building ready, but the people who are going to occupy it are feeling okay about coming back to school. So this has been a large team effort. There's many people that have been involved. And again, the bottom line is school is going to start at Wilkins next week. It is going to be safe and we are ready to do it. With that said, it has not been easy along the way. It has been difficult along the way. So we've been interfacing with our insurance carrier, with the company that's been hired to do the mitigation work, and lots of other people to get us our school where it is today. And I'm happy to report now that there are no major issues. There are issues that we're ironing out, but in the end, we're in very, very good shape. And so I just want to recognize all of those people who have done that work because it's been a lot. So, but with that, I'm happy to answer questions of the board.
Have you guys started your own, like, mitigation company now? Like a hazardous waste mitigation?
Rest and smoking waste.
Exactly. Any questions from the board on the process, on the results? Victoria?
Are there any costs that the board should be expecting down the road?
Maybe. So as with any insurance claim, as we know, when you drive a brand-new car and get into an accident, it never feels like you got back to where you were before the accident. That's probably the case here on a much lower and smaller scale. So there are disagreements in the process. There are things that we think something is worth and then other people think differently. And so there are some things that we have made some decisions that are on the side of supporting our teachers, supporting our administrators to have the stuff they need to start school. And it's possible, because we've made those decisions to ensure the school year starts right, that there's some financial exposure to us because we didn't adjudicate those things fully before we made the decisions because we decided we're going to work with what we have and make the decision we have right now today. So I'm not ready to say exactly what that might be, but we are anticipating providing ringing endorsements to the people that have supported us along the way in this process, but we're not ready to make those endorsements quite yet.
Terry, you had a question?
Sorry, I have to mute. I know that we've had a lot of the public who's been very interested in supporting anything that isn't covered by insurance that we may need. Are there any needs right now? Have we been working with PTA? Kind of where do we stand with that?
Yeah, that's a great question. And so that's really in line with what I was just talking about. There are some things that are identified as personal items of our teachers or even our administrators who have large book collections that were damaged that may not be covered. And so until we meet out those specific issues, we're not sure what those needs will be quite yet. So I know our PTA in particular and many other people in town have been very anxious to be supportive of us. I think there will be a need of some kind. But until we know exactly what it is, we simply just don't know the answer quite yet.
I wanted to throw in that the PTA is actually having a fundraiser this weekend to start raising funds for any of those items. So if anybody's interested, I know the PTA has posted information about that. So.
Great.
Saturday.
Any other questions regarding the fire? Terry, I assume your question was your original question. I can take your hand out. That would be me knowing how to do that. But regardless, Terry's all set. Josh, anything?
Nope. I would echo Beth. August 28th, White Birch Brewing is the PTA fundraiser from 12 to 8. So I encourage everybody to go to that. I did want to ask, do we have the closet back at this point? Is everything returned to us?
I don't know. Monday.
Monday. Okay.
Do you have a portion of the budget back? The only thing we're waiting on is for the ceiling grid to be installed, and that's on Friday.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we will continue on. And again, I want to echo Adam's comments and credit him as well. A great job before they're here tonight, Kathleen, Hannah, Roger, and certainly Adam with his direction and everything. I know that they put in the work. I'm sure there are a lot more people involved than that as well, Amy.
Amy in particular.
Amy in particular, yes. So.
I did not. I failed to mention Amy.
Good.
I was kicked under the table. No, I'm teasing, but Amy also did an unbelievable amount of work.
And so to do that in what essentially was a one-month turnaround or so, less than a month maybe, is to get that up and running and to be able to start school next week is really starting school this week as teachers start work on Friday. So great job by everybody there. And I'm sure that they're all ready to get back and get going on that. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. We'll take a motion to approve, and then we'll open it up to discussion. Are there any, is there anything in there that anybody wants to take out originally? Or you want to just motion to approve it as a whole and then discuss after? Let's do that. Can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda from Beth? Second?
I'll second.
Victoria will second. So we will open it up for discussion. I know we've typically done this on the SAU level where we have the principals give their overall guidance or maybe touch on some of the highlights if you'd like to in your principal's report. And then we can certainly follow up with any questions that we have. Who wants to go first?
I'll go first.
So if you're prepared to do that. I know we've typically done it. We didn't talk beforehand, but I thought that you would.
Yeah, just ready to go. So also, I mean, there's a lot of shout-outs for those people with the fire, but I would also just echo the teachers. The first time they could get into the building was last Monday. So just that today, we had, it was kind of highlighted in the report. We had all of the reboot. So any remote student, any homeschool student was in the building. We also had new to us first graders. We had all new parents and students to us this year also. So we had, you know, close to 150, 200 families in the building today. And for them to look at it and not really realize that there was an issue or a fire in the building, just unbelievable. So very excited about that. We were able to, I'm just kind of rolling. We were able to kind of talk about our new plan for trying to stretch our lunches to out. I'm going to go with this. We have three names. So we have picnic. Our picnic lunch is outside. Our buffet is on the cafeteria floor. And then fine dining is on the stage. So each week, the classes will rotate so that we're able to space out. And I would say we have brand-new tables last year we were never able to use. They seat eight. We're going to have four at each of those tabletops. So we did a simulation, but we were also able to have all of the families in today to kind of get a feel for that too. So and I would do a shout-out to our teacher leadership that really helped us with that problem for us to be able to solve. So pretty good. And Roger's going to solve the tent issue because of, then the monsoon the other day broke the front tent. But all good on that. Student, you know, just kind of looking over all this, just the amount of things that were able to be accomplished with the little hiccup of July 15th fire. Everybody from Title I quickly shifted over to AMS with the help of Bethany and her crew and Grant Dustin. Everybody from special ed with some, you know, students that have some needs that were in the building to quickly be able to shift over to Clark without losing a day of time. So all of those things are on top of, you know, getting ready for school. So I would just say a big shout-out for all those. And just a quick, I think I didn't have on here, but just a quick update on looping. I think we're still kind of in the process of our philosophically where we are on that. We do have committees, three committees on for policies and procedures. That's anywhere from students not wanting to continue on in the loop. We, obviously, it's great to hear, this is an exciting night to hear about the new school, but one of the big stumbling blocks for Clark Wilkins is the two buildings and having to switch classes every single year. And I know Christine is part of our process, but it is a wider SAU, not just Amherst, but also Mont Vernon. We have talked about a lot of different bridging activities so that we could actually have kindergarten and first-grade teacher assignments so that kids could start this year doing transition activities. So I might have a buddy teacher in first grade and that we could start, regardless of where looping stands, we can start some of the mitigation for the transition concerns that we have. And that's it on that piece. Yes.
Questions for Hannah?
So the, with the cafeteria, is it more spread out? Are you able to take over the PE space? Or is the lunch area still?
Yeah, it's still the lunch area. You know, when we talked with teacher leadership the other day, just the ability to clean and move the tables, I would say something that the teacher leadership committee was able to do this year was not have competing classes, PE and lunch at the same time. So that was huge. But there's no, there's not a lot of time to be able to do that. So that, we did engage in that conversation. But in essence, we're splitting people in half. So where 150 kids would be in one space, we've now moved them to three spaces for the 150 kids.
What will happen on rainy days?
You know what? This isn't being recorded, right? So we also said if it, so those two classes, they're going to have to go into the classroom and spread out. But I think we're going to be not back in the day where, ooh, it's misting, you know, misty, water-colored. Yeah, we're going out to the tent. Yeah.
Just to follow up to that, I normally don't want to take, jump in too soon, but with the lunches, are kids allowed to talk? My fourth grader was very concerned that last year in the classrooms, they had silent lunches, so they watched videos and such. But she wants to know if they can talk during lunch.
Yes.
Okay, I can go home with a successful story. Anybody else? Victoria?
Yes. First of all, thank you for jumping on lunches so quickly. I know it's only Wednesday, and I think that request officially came down the pipe on Monday. So.
Yes.
Thank you for that. Along the same lines, when we talk about some outdoor time to unmask, if there are any needs that your school or AMS has, make sure that you're sharing those with either the district, the board, or whatever other volunteer organizations we have here in town who are happy to jump in and help if there's anything else that's required. And then my only other question came from your report that you have 20 new Clark Wilkins students very recently. So I'm a little bit curious if we have information, if those are returning to the district, brand-new to the district.
The majority are brand-new.
Brand-new.
Yeah, and then in the next report, we'll kind of have just the total in and the total out. But way more in than went out.
And they seem to be spread across the grades?
Yeah, there is, it isn't, like typically what it is, whichever class, we have the least amount of space, that's where everybody comes into. It was not this year.
That's good.
Yeah. And our numbers are pretty right there, what they have been.
Yeah, I can take this opportunity. I'd just like to thank all the buildings for their reopening, reentry plans for students who were away last year. I have three students who are all more excited about going back to their schools today than they would have been before this. So thank you for that. Um, it has been great. I did wanna ask, so I saw, and I mean, I might have missed this, there's early dismissal for AMS on the first day. Is it early dismissal for Clark Wilkins as well, or is it a full day for our?
It's full day unless you approve something tonight. No, no, Clark Wilkins teachers are listening.
Okay, so, so our middle school and high school have partial days, I believe, but okay.
Yes.
Okay. Um, I think that's all I have for our younger group.
Terry?
Yes, so first I want to echo Victoria's comment. Um, thank you for jumping on lunches so quickly and not only jumping on it, but coming up with fun names. I think that is a nice, it makes it feel less like it's compulsory and more like it's fun. You get to be the fine dining today. Like I, I just think it's. It's a great thing, especially for that age group. Um. Outside time, I know that you have heard it from Adam, but I would just like to reiterate, reiterate from all of us that. It's really important to us to not just get a mask break for a few minutes, but to. Engage outside and to actually, and, and we are. Open to trying to provide some resources um for helping teachers come up with ideas and come up with curriculums and planning, and I'm. Not sure yet exactly what that needs to look like, but it's something that I know that as a, a board, we are committed to helping um happen. And so I would just like to, I know that you've heard it from Adam, but I'd like you to hear it from us as well. And I wanna ask a little bit about. Drop off and pickup, is it going to be pretty much the same as it was last year? Cause I know that seemed to work extremely well.
Yes, um, we made some strides last year that things that we would never go back to. Um, that allowed the process to move a lot more quickly in a healthy, quieter fashion. Y- yes, I, I think um those protocols, we're, we are adding more students in, but. Uh, yes, we are sticking to everything at both schools and both locations.
Great, cause I have a feeling that you're out of a lot of parents who are gonna be curious about that. So thank you for answering that. And, and overall, I just would also like to echo the thank you for, I know that. Amazing amount of time and effort that has gone into making sure that Wilkins is ready to open and, and thank you.
You're welcome. I do have to do a shout out to Neil Vopel because I don't wanna take credit for the naming of the different. Uh, locations and there are videos on our uh, the handbook and the website, things that we handed out. So. Any parents um looking for the videos of uh drop off pickup. Uh, we, we were just trying to take the temperature gauge today, cause it's like everybody's worst nightmare when they have to go to. Parent drop off and what it means, but it's, it's, it's fun. It's the best part of the day for us. So those videos will be helpful.
Sorry, I, I just realized I wanted to mention one more thing, and that is um, we do have volunteers uh available in yellow status this year. Uh, and there is a new policy and process for that. So if you want to volunteer, you simply go pick up a packet at the brick school. Uh, and then you go get your fingerprints done, which I did today. It's very easy and quick and you get it back into the office and then you can be a volunteer. So there is a process now. Um, if you have questions, you can reach out to the PTA or the board about that, but it is important to get that done as soon as possible so that as we need volunteers, we have.
Sure, thank you. Uh, yeah, so it's been a busy summer at AMS as well. Um, the building, thanks to. Um, Rick Braun's crew and Roger's uh guidance looks amazing and we're ready to welcome students in. They've done a fantastic job of. Resorting everything we sorted out of classrooms and into storage back to where it belongs. Um, and I, we may have to do a display at some point of the artifacts of AMS that we have discovered through this whole process. Um, it's, it's been, it's been interesting. Um, but have been busy, teachers have been in the building quite a bit the month of August. We've done a ton of different curriculum work. Really excited that we've had the opportunity this summer to do um work bridging. Um, Amherst Middle School in South Heagan, so we had a six twelve math um day. We had a. Seven twelve Humanities Institute. Um, we did, was one other one, wasn't there? That was. A five, six Humanities Institute, but, but really are looking at opportunities to um get teachers across the buildings together, really do a real scope and sequence. It was great. An opportunity to have them have conversations about the curriculum in ways that they haven't had a lot of opportunity to do in the past and really see what's being taught across. Um, and has resulted in some really positive change, I think, on, in both schools and both schools' curriculums to really better align. So. Um, thank you to Steve and to Christine for um making that happen for all of our teachers. Um, and then have just done a lot of work curriculum wise in middle school, really being intentional in what we're doing and in what we're teaching and in why we're doing it. That's really our theme for the year is start with why. Um, in that all the decisions we're making, all the choices we make, let's be really intentional and transparent in why we do. What we do. Um, and that will be really an overarching theme for our school year. We closed out a couple of really successful summer programs. It was great to have the Clark Wilkins Title One in the building as well. Um, I think it's given the program maybe some ideas for the future. Um, looking at partnerships and buddies. Uh, across schools, right? So the middle school is in a unique position in that we're the only building in the district that touches all three other. Other schools, really. Um, and so an opportunity to connect maybe some of our students um with Clark Wilkins students, but also connecting our teachers. Really in having teachers get a sense of, of what each grade level is teaching and, and. Why they do what they do. We're excited to relaunch the school year. As you mentioned, we do have a, a half day. We were able to. South Heagan has always traditionally done that early release on that first day, so we were able to jump onto those buses and, and not add another bus route. So. To align with that, it's really given us the opportunity to rethink that first day of school, really about relaunching, recommitting as a community of learners. Um, about reentry to school, bringing the community back together. Um, we have a great day planned for students. We have some extended time in fifth grade with morning meeting. And six through eight, relaunching our launch pads, which will be multi-age groups. Um, really, really nice. The groups are about ten to twelve students. Um, so nice, small groups with an anchoring adult that will stay with them for all of their years at the middle school. So we're actually doing some training with that um and working with multi-ages in our in-service day. Um, with Sarah Fillion is coming to help us do some of that and really excited to relaunch that. So we have a bunch of team building and activities really designed for that day. And then also time on team for students to get to know their team teachers um and do those things. What we've told teachers is. We've given them a lot of freedom to design that time with the intent and that it has to align with the vision of. Reacclimating, re-welcoming, reunifying our school community. So really excited about that first day and, and all that it holds for. Um, all of our students and really our staff coming back in. Um, and it also offers an opportunity for us to reconnect with staff afterwards because we've had a. Disrupted school year too and really pulling all of them back together and, and meeting their needs as well. Um. We loaded in, into the um, the principal's report for, for kind of year review, what were, were, what our goals and really our objectives are for this coming school year. So even with the disruption of the past couple of years, we feel really good about meeting the objectives we set forth with rethinking time. Um, really re-engaging our, our school as a place where students and staff really feel welcome and really want to be every day, cause we know that. When our, when our staff is happy walking in the building, our kids are happy too, right? So really re-engaging on a professional level, making sure that everyone. Um, is really part of that positive community of learners, cause it takes, it takes everyone. Um, our big goal this year and probably the primary focus is really reuniting our community of learners and recommitting to our core beliefs and practices. That actively contribute to a positive learning environment. Um, there's a lot that goes into that. Um, part of the activity we did at the end of the school year last year, which I'll be excited to share out in its final form as we get going this fall. Was we asked teachers to look at the, the tenants of the whole child, so healthy, safe, engaged, challenged and supported. And really, um, staff broke themselves into groups that they really identified which of those characteristics. And um through a whole visioning process, developed a set of statements for each of those about what we believe at Amherst Middle School. What is it that we believe that every, if we say every child should be healthy, what does that mean to us? What does that look like? What does that look like when we walk in the classroom? What does that look like to kids? How do they know that we're committed to that? Um, and that's really gonna be our anchoring work this year as we, as we dive back in with our students and both. Helping them to achieve everything they can academically, um, but really laying that foundation where they do have the opportunity to achieve that academically. So. We're excited to welcome everyone back. We're ready to kick off. Um, it's gonna be a great year.
Any questions or comments? Terry?
Yeah, so as always, I am loving the enthusiasm and I really like, I. I like why. I was a journalism major, so why is a, is a great question to ask for everything, right? It's a great place to start. Um, couple of specifics. I wanna know a little bit about what lunch is gonna look like at AMS. We've heard about it at Clark Wilkins, and so I'd like to hear about it at AMS. And I specifically, we had, um, at our last meeting, we had a, a Mont Vernon student come and, and, and get up to the mic. And, and I really felt for her saying, you know what, I'm already coming in. I don't know a lot of these students and now. I don't get to see their whole face. I don't get to connect as much. Kind of what's our plan around helping? I know you always do a great job bridging those students in, but it is a little bit different. When it's not as easily recognized and, and you can't engage. And so kind of what is your outside plan as well? Because I know that we think about getting our little kids out, but we sometimes forget that all of us need time outside. And so I'd like to hear a little bit more about um what's going on at AMS outside.
Sure, so um, uh, let me just start with transitions back. So last, last week? Yeah, I think it was just last week. Um, we had our summer reboot program where we welcomed students that had been remote back into the building. To do tours and really participate in some activities. Um, we also had tours last week for any fifth grader. Um, coming to AMS who wanted to be a part of that for Mont Vernon students who are coming over for the first time. And we've actually been offering a number of just tours individually to families over the summer. So that's a big piece. Um, in, in really helping everyone find their place, those launch pads are going to be really critical. We're also building into our late start day, um, really looking at how we use the time on that day, especially with the later start time now that. Students are coming at ten thirty and maybe going to lunch within fifteen minutes. Um, looking at a way to, to think about that time a little bit differently, to do some team building, um, some of the SEL work in that. On those um late start days as well with students. Um, really trying to move our, our school from. I don't want us to talk about SEL. I don't want us to say this is an SEL lesson. SEL should be who we are, right? So we're really working to build capacity with our staff. Um, our, we have a really amazing SEL team who's working to do that. Um, really build capacity with our staff to better understand the things that we do that do tie into those social emotional learning competencies. Um, and really help students all find their place, um, and find their people when they're, when they're at the middle school. So. Um, we have a number of different activities and a different, different kinds of touchstones for those students over the course of the year. In terms of outside, um, we're really fortunate in that we have a great outdoor area right by our cafeteria. So. Um, our plan is to eat lunch outside as long as possible. Um, and every day that it's possible. So unless there's really inclement weather, we were able to eat lunch outside and really be outside. Especially because of the mild winter last year, but I really think like eighty percent of our school days, we had lunch outside last year. Um, the kids really enjoyed it and also because um it just gave them the freedom to move right into recess and things like that. So we'll still have lunch outside. Um, we've worked with John Lash and Kelly Clark in our kitchen to develop a great plan. Um, where students will be able to go through the lunch line, but actually are going to take their trays right outside. Um, with them and there'll be a station where they can um return their trays right there and then move right into recess. So um, we'll be outside for lunches. Um, we are, while we can't. Not use the front of the building for parking this year because we have everyone in and our parking lot isn't big enough to just keep that whole front clear, which would be amazing. Um, we will close that off during lunches. So anyone who parks there, don't plan on leaving during lunches. That way, we know that there's no traffic going through and that will help with safety considerations for kids too. So we'll be outside. If we do have to be indoors, our plan is to send half of the, of the teams um per grade level to the cafeteria. And the other half will keep in classrooms. Um, we have enough supervision to have kind of four classrooms worth of students and then the other four. In our biggest grades like seventh and eighth down in the um cafeteria. And then we'll just limit seating down there. Um, in terms of other outdoor time, last year we were able to outfit every single classroom with um radios. So they're all tied into the school radio system, which makes going outside a whole lot easier because all the teachers need to do is. Grab their emergency backpack, have their radio, let the office know they're going outside, although we're working on the mechanism to, for that a little bit, to make that a little smoother. Um, and they can take their class right outside. So we are encouraging teachers to really take advantage of the natural opportunities in their curriculum to go outside. My science teachers are. All, they, they are all on board for this. They are gung ho. We know that our walkies actually work all the way over to the South Heagan River. We tested that with fifth grade last year. They wanna see if it works all the way to the bog. I said, that's a little much. But uh, they're all on top of that. We're planning to do all of our PE classes. Just spoke with our two PE teachers um earlier today. All of those will be outside. We've reserved a field for them. Um, students, most students in the building have PE. In addition to their lunch recess time every other day. So that's a significant time to get them outside and moving as well. Um, we're a little different than the elementary in that our kids are moving in different blocks through the day, but um teachers are gonna look for those opportunities for. Even just a quick mass break outside. Um, we call them wellness breaks because sometimes it's to make, take a mass break. Sometimes if you're having snack, it's just great to go outside and do that. Um, our eighth, one of our eighth grade math teachers, Vicky Leckness is, um. She is a big fan of, of power walks to jazz kids up and get their, get the blood flowing to the brain and to focus them. So. We'll really be taking advantage of those moments to get outside, get moving. Um, whether it's instructional and actually having a class outside, whether they're doing silent reading or some journaling, or whether it's one of those wellness breaks. Um, just to take advantage of that, of that space, we'll be doing all of those things.
Victoria?
Yes. Um, okay, I'll, I'll start. Um, sixth grade humanities position. Has it been filled or will it be filled shortly enough before school starts for students to know?
There is a candidate coming before you this evening.
Okay.
So yes.
Um, in your report.
Yes, it's still listed as new teacher in power school until everything is official.
Okay, but it will be.
Yes.
Official before school starts for some students.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Um, in your report, you list seven new paras. Are those seven new paras new positions or are they?
Most of them are existing positions of um folks that have retired. We actually retired a lot of paras last year. Um, was great to, it was, it was sad to see them go, but I'm happy for the next chapter for them. So mostly retirements, some of them. I believe one might be a new position, but based on special education needs in um the life skills program and, and students coming in. Um, but not in addition otherwise.
Okay. Um, and then I just, I just wanna follow up, um, where you spoke about curriculum. It sounds like you all have done a lot of curriculum work over the summer, and I know that there is a plan to present some of that curriculum work at the South Heagan meeting. I would love to have some of that curriculum work presented to the Amherst School Board, um, so that we understand where some of the. The changes are that are gonna happen at, at AMS to make sure that our students are ready for the next step. Great.
Yes, that was our plan.
Sounds great, thank you.
And just for clarification, the SAU meeting, uh, not the South Heagan meeting, it'd be the SAU meeting where the overall board gets part of it. Said South Heagan, so.
I'm a little bit unsure of what is being presented regarding curriculum tomorrow night at the South Heagan meeting versus what's being presented at the SAU meeting, and I think that. There might be some overlap, or maybe Adam can clarify.
I can clarify. So a, a member of our public has asked all of our boards about curriculum mapping in particular. And tomorrow night, Mr. Chamberlain is gonna present on that to the South Heagan Board, but we're happy to present that to the SAU and or the Amherst Board as well.
Okay, so two separate things, I guess. I would love to have us also discuss curriculum mapping, how Tom and I have already discussed. Um, but then also to discuss this point.
Yeah, any provisions to our curriculum always come forward to the school board.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, so I have any other uh points making sense agenda that anybody has any questions on? Why do you guys raise your hands every time I look the other way?
That's why we all are supposed to sit at the same side of the table, Josh. Just joking. Anyway, um, okay, so I have a couple of, on the um student handbooks. Um, I just have a couple of points. Anna, those videos are amazing. Um, I had heard rumors when we hired you that you were huge into videos and thank you for delivering. I love it. Um, as for the other parts, the um, I happen to see the volunteers were mentioned. Um, I would love to see the vol, you know, under the volunteer guidelines section. Um, we have a new volunteer policy that's actually going to be used this year. It existed last year, but we didn't really have volunteers in the building, so. People may not necessarily be aware, if we could explicitly um link to the, our current policy. Um, because we do need fingerprinting for our designated volunteers and a lot of our volunteer positions are designated volunteers now. Um, and on that, if you got, especially with the lunch help and, you know, us, you know, asking you guys to spread out more. If you need help. Please ask for help and we can definitely um get more volunteers headed your way for that. So that was my two points.
Any further questions?
I have one. Um, one, thank you for already looking at me.
Beth was took her hand down, so.
Um, my question is for Roger. We have, just pulling this up. Um, we have some expenditure authorization on here, um, which is prepared by Amy, but there's a line in there. For landscaping over at Wilkins. Um, that's a hefty line, uh, almost twenty thousand dollars, so it's just.
This is item eleven on the consent, I had the same.
Correct.
So it's item eleven if everybody's looking at it.
But these are all the projects that were pulled from the CNA. The CNA, like, at CNA, this is still being reviewed, but we definitely do feel that we do need some landscape upgrades over at Wilkins.
So we are evaluating all of these projects that are on the list. We wanted to bring them forward just in case. Um, so that you guys could vote on them today and we're able to move forward to not slow down our process of getting things completed. Um, we are evaluating the list on the CNA. Um, the landscape repairs that you talk about, I can only think of just the back retaining wall where the. Playground is.
I presume that's the fencing that goes along with that. That's why there's.
Exactly. And the fencing, I believe, is just minor repairs when it gets in there, but I, I have to assume that it's just that wetland fence that we have on that side.
Yeah, and just to clarify, we're asking for an expenditure up to that amount, and as Roger said, we're gonna be evaluating. We just wanna be able to have the flexibility to. Um, take a look at what these projects are, make sure they make sense. Um, and not slow down any work that we would do with vendors if we were able to get, um, to get bids and have, and have them be held on to. Um, but we would be following the policy to, um, to receive free bids if possible. Um, and the funds would not actually be drawn from the CNA. Or from the Expendable Trust Fund until we have a public hearing and, um, and it's approved by the board. And then they're, they're um sent to the trustees of the trust fund.
Will these be done as soon as possible or will they be staged throughout the year?
Um, staged throughout the year just because we don't wanna impact school with it, us opening.
Yeah, and I'll just add also next month, we have on the agenda to provide the board an update of all projects that were. That you approve to be done using the unassigned fund balance as well as an update to any of these projects. So it's our plan to bring you updates on those as we move forward throughout the year.
Anybody else? Okay, so we'll take it to a vote. Uh, all in favor of the consent agenda. Terry, we'll start with you.
Beam, yes.
Free CS.
Conklin, yes.
Who's my yes?
And Gothy, are yes. So those, that passes five to nothing. Uh, and Anna and Bethany, thank you for your time and Amy, thank you for your. Feedback on the uh, the, the information there as well. Um, so the last thing we have in our agenda is for me, this will be very quick. Um, I am serving on the, the master planning committee. The town of Amherst is. Uh, updating its twenty ten master plan. Um, a year late, it's usually done every ten years and it's just a, it's a. I'm gonna read right from the uh email that was sent to all the committees. It's just easier to do that. It's a long-term planning document that guides the communities, future growth, development, activity. Infrastructure investments and land use changes in the community provides guidance to local officials making decisions on budgets, ordinances, capital improvements. Land use regulations and other issues related to development, resource protection and quality of life. Throughout the process, the town will analyze community issues and opportunities and identify clear actions to achieve the vision and goals that emerge. So. Uh, the master planning committee, we're, right now, we're going over. I've lost my uh, I know, the current conditions uh report. So it's just looking at. Infrastructure, transportation, schools, going over all the current conditions, and then the next step is to put that together, put it on the website that we have. And then start to analyze what we want the future to look like, trying to preserve that. and then start to analyze what we want the future to look like, trying to preserve that rural, that rural lifestyle culture that we have here in the town. So there is a website. I'll make sure that it is in the, I'll send it to Dana so that it's in the minutes. And Adam, I think I'll send it to you as well. I don't know if it's something that is appropriate to blast out maybe through Nixle or through a school communication system. And you can probably just take the blurb that I'll send you, but it has the link to that master plan website in there. So as we start to update those reports and they go on the website when they're finalized, you can see those and follow along in the process. And then they will have community forums over the course of the next six to eight months with a completion date, ideally in the the middle of March of 2022. But you can follow along with that and then you can get the meeting schedule on that website and and just learn more about this process and and stay up to date on that. And the number one thing that we talked about last night is that we do want community engagement. So we want folks to share opinions and and input as you see those current current conditions reports come up. And then as we go forward to the public meeting, so stay tuned to that website if it's something that you are interested in, what the future of Amherst will look like. And you can see a lot of that on that website, but we'll include it in an email out through Nixle and then I'll also include it in the minutes for everybody to have a look at as well. So. And with that, if there's nothing else, I, we do have a non-public tonight and I don't see the RSA. Before we do that, though, I'll take public input. We don't have anybody here. So does not appear that there is any public input tonight. So we will move on to the non-public. I don't know the RSA. I just mentioned that's not on the agenda there, so.
91A, 3, 2, Section A and C.
So I will take a motion to go into non-public under that RSA number.
I'll make that motion.
I'll get a second. Josh, Terry will start. Roll call vote with you.
Beam, yes.
Free CS.
Conklin, yes.
Who's my yes?
Gothy, or yes. We are officially in non-public. Everybody else, thank you for your time tonight and good luck on Friday and then Monday or Tuesday, rather. Yes.